Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Staff have no changes to present this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, I'll open up for public forum. If anybody's here wishing to address the council, that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'll go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, after reviewing the consent agenda as submitted and trusting that my colleagues have also, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda passes. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we'll move on into new business. And the first item on the agenda tonight is Halsted High School After Prom is here for a donation request. I assume we have representation here.
My name is Zane McNojia. I'm the senior class president this year for the seniors, and I'm here to request money for our after prom.
All right, council, any questions?
Well, are you a part of the planning of this? What kind of things you guys gonna be doing at after prom here?
We're going to the YMCA on...
We're going to the Wichita Northwest YMCA.
Yeah, they're taking a bus and after prom, we're all gonna go there and play games and have prizes and stuff.
I was pretty well involved with one of your fundraising activities, so I'm hoping that came in handy and helps you guys out, and you have a good time.
Well, I think all of us are aware that we've been doing this for many, many years, and traditionally it's been $500 here and a little bit more at different times, but I think this year I'd like to make a motion to bump it up to $800. That'd be my motion to bump it.
All right.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve $800 donation to the Halsted High School After Prom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Congratulations. Enjoy yourself, be safe, stay out of trouble.
Thank you so much.
And come wash my car.
And thanks for coming in tonight. I kinda made a precedent a few years ago to make sure that when you guys come in and ask for money, you have to show up and ask. So, thanks for coming in.
Thanks, guys.
Next on our agenda, we have the HEAL grant support. I believe Tessa Windling's here to talk about that.
Tessa, before you start, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna go run and get materials. I'm sorry, we forgot to put them at your guys' place, but it's relevant to her presentation, but I think she can start and go through.
Should we play charades while you're gone, or?
Hello, everyone. I am here to ask the city to apply for... Do you want me to wait till Ethan comes back, or go ahead?
I think you can go ahead.
He knows all of what I'm gonna say. To apply for a HEAL grant on my behalf. The HEAL grant stands for Historic Economic Asset Lifeline, and it's a partnership between the Kansas Department of Commerce and the Patterson Foundation. And what's unique about these... The way this grant works is I cannot apply as the building owner. The city or nonprofit needs to apply on my behalf, so that's why I'm here asking the city to apply on my behalf. And Ethan can tell you the more of the mechanics of exactly how that works. But the goal of this program is to bring downtown buildings back into productive use. And as you guys are all very familiar with the 204 Main building and all the work that you did, additional work is still needed to bring 204 Main up to productive use. So, the grant would be to help me cover those expenses for that. To be eligible for the grant, it has to be in the downtown area, a building of historical significance, and then also show potential for reuse and revitalization. There's a number of other criteria as well, but focuses on small towns and rural areas. So, the proposed work for the space is ceiling insulation and new ceiling, a restroom, plumbing, electrical, and then also restoring the front facade to hopefully get it to look as much like it originally did as possible while still be having kind of an ADA compliant door and those things. The grant does require a ratio, a one-to-one match of my private funds. The grant is also limited based on the square footage, so I estimate the grant will be hopefully around 30,000, but it's a $150-plus-thousand-dollar project, so there's still considerable investment by me to get the building in a usable condition. The ultimate use would be then the cafe, which will hopefully open in April. We'll use that for additional seating next door. Any questions?
No, it sounds like a great plan. Have you researched that building at all? Have you found any real nice tidbits about it?
I haven't found an enormous amount. So, it was built in 1879 in, I think, well, I've seen reports, January or March of 1879, there was a fire that burnt down the three buildings that were on that location. And then this, the building, which was 200 to 208, was called the Stone Block, built after the fire, and I think it was already done by November, so they got it built fairly quickly by our time standards today. And, I mean, I've researched the previous businesses that were in the property, but what I will... What you do find looking through all the articles is references to the Stone Block. Because I am eventually doing a historical application for 208. Based on the extensive work done on 204, I don't know that it would qualify as a historical building anymore.
Well, that's kind of interesting to me that at one time they had a fire there. Makes you wonder if that's perhaps why our local fire department got elevated to the statute that it is today, because, you know, for a city our size, we do have a pretty good-sized fire department. Could be interesting on how historical events could have had an impact on that. So, now we wait for Ethan.
What kind of ceiling? You gonna go with an old, the stamped tile look? Are you just gonna go with an acoustic ceiling, or?
No. It'll be a tin ceiling, but in a, likely in the grid. It's what I've done in the second floor at an old hardware store. The drop ceiling makes it a lot easier for all of your wiring, but the tin, still, it looks like a tin. Not quite as nice, but it's pretty close, so those can be... They have a number of different finishes that you can...
It'll look nice.
You've certainly done a lot of square footage of blowing insulation over there. Noticed the other day, and you have several of those air conditioning units, so...
Oh, yes.
Hopefully, all that insulation pays off for you.
I hope so. And then the units so far are working well.
Yeah, those are... Those units like that, those mini splits are very efficient. So, Ethan, what we've learned so far is this is gonna create some work for you, so you're up for the challenge, I assume?
Yeah.
Well, I think Tessa's done a pretty good job of explaining it to us. Counsel, do you have any additional questions?
No, I did have questions, but just as soon as you got into your presentation, you answered many of them for me, so that was good.
And that has a little, well, a picture of what the building used to look like, and then the tenor of floor plans.
Did you get all these old photos from the Halsted Historical Society?
I did.
Cool. Well, it looks like a very ambitious plan, Tessa, and I'm glad you're up for the task. This will be a nice addition to our community when it's complete.
I thought I saw it in here, the deadline for applying?
March 31st.
Burnt some midnight oil on this one, aren't you?
So, he got it done.
Are you all done with all the grant process?
No, we need approval, but...
Right, that's one way down for Joe.
Okay.
No doubt that Tessa and I can get it done.
Sure, well, good. Well, there are no more questions. Thanks for this here. I would make a motion to approve the City of Halsted submitting a HEAL grant on behalf of the property owner for 204 Main Street, and authorize for staff to submit letters of support or commitment on behalf of the city.
Second. Have a motion in a second for the city to apply for the HEAL grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Good luck, Tessa.
Good luck. Looking forward to it all.
Next item on our agenda this evening is Nysley Brothers Reserve a Dumpster Proposal, and Ethan will bring us up to par on that.
Thank you. Nysley staff contacted us. They would like to see the city transition from the citywide cleanup that they normally do, which is typically, you know, one day, a week after the citywide garage sales in June. And what they're proposing instead would be that two eight-yard containers would be at the city shop, and essentially, residents would be able to reserve those for a week at a time. The schedule will be run through City Hall here. We would coordinate that information back to Nysley, so they know where to drop off containers or pick them up from. And then when no resident would have them, they would just stay there at the city shop and able to be reserved. You can kind of see in the information they provided what they would anticipate as far as the Monday and Wednesdays. Repeat, the advantages they list there would be, basically, they feel, instead of one weekend where a lot of junk is out, and then, you know, scrappers or people that are going through stuff that's curbside, sometimes spread trash, or don't necessarily put those piles that might have been neat from the property owner back into a neat area, or when residents put out things that aren't allowed and they end up staying curbside, that basically this would allow people at their leisure to essentially clean up their properties as needed. The big difference for the city, if you would, is right now, under our contract with Nysley, we pay 100% of the tipping fees to the landfill for that weekend. Going back and looking at our last several years, we never usually had more than $1,000 in fees for that one weekend as far as tipping fees, so it's not a huge expense on our refuse budget. But Nysley has indicated that if the city were to do this program, they would actually pay all those tipping fees, so there would be that cost savings to us as far as direct costs that we pay now that we wouldn't pay under this program. Of course, the flip side of that is we're investing staff time to kind of monitor this, depending on how busy it is. As far as some of the logistics, obviously, these are eight-yard roll-offs, so bigger, most likely they're gonna end up being, having to be placed in the street, not knowing what everyone's front yard setbacks and whatnot look like. So, there's some potential, depending on what area of town these would be put in, of, you know, where those go, and does that create traffic issues or sightline issues if it's closer to the, you know, an intersection. Their thought, and I guess the communities where they've kind of done this pilot program, is, you know, they try and encourage whole blocks or, you know, neighbors to go in together and kind of all pitch in and do their cleaning at one time. Big reservations, just us talking staff-wise about trying to do it this year as we've kind of already put out there, and we're three months away from what has been expected to always happen in Halsted. So, not that we're opposed to looking at a new idea, but I think for 2023, just to not cause any issue or confusion, probably keeping citywide cleanup would be our preference from a staff thing of just, I mean, we have newsletters going out this week, so we need to know whether, I guess, to advertise it or not. That being said, just wanted to put it out there. That was Nysley's request. They feel the, this Reserve a Dumpster fits more into kind of their operations and how they would like to run things. They will, of course, honor what's in the contract, which is, once a year, they do that citywide cleanup. Nysley does do bulk pickup throughout the year as long as residents are calling them and being very specific with what item they're placing out there, so that would continue as well. Because that would be the other concern is, I mean, with these being larger dumpsters, you know, the benefit of citywide cleanup is you just put it curbside, it disappears. When you got a dumpster, you know, unless they're walk-in, you know, depending on what you have, I don't know, some residents might have trouble picking that up and getting it up and into a roll-off, but...
What if it doesn't fit?
So, and then there's still the same prohibitions they have now as far as couldn't be used for construction materials, household hazardous waste, that kind of thing. So, that would be my other fear that we might have to deal with occasionally is, you know, somebody is gutting their house and reserves one of these and then puts a whole bunch of non-material in there, and we would probably need to cover how we're gonna handle that with a resident that...
That would definitely happen.
Blatantly, and that was our one fear about them kind of just being out at City Hall or City Hall, the city shop, is same thing of, you know, you go two months without them being reserved. How much are they filling up with then?
Well, my concern is if they're kept at the city shop and many citizens know that they're there, just face it, there are some people that are gonna take advantage of it. And my thought is, I don't know that I want just a lot of people having access. I mean, they do have access, but I don't want them going back there and seeing what's back there at the city shop. I can see it creating a problem for Pat and his men if they're just... Everybody's taking their trash there, and, gosh, there's a dumpster there. I don't need to have trash service anymore. I can see that going on.
Or filling it up and then setting things outside, and then we'd have to worry about that.
And not everything's gonna fit into those either. So, and then what do you do? What do you do there? Just leave it in the street until they can come in two weeks and a week or whatever and pick up the dumpster, or I don't know?
Well, Brad, if somebody, if that, let's say it was in a neighborhood down here on the south end of town, and somebody's out there, people need to exercise common sense, and as long as they don't, that's why there's lawsuits. So, I can see somebody trying to lift a recliner up on that thing, hurting themselves. Would the city have any exposure in that?
No, not typically. Anybody can sue anyone for anything, but typically in a case like that, no.
I think probably the best thing to do would be to keep our citywide cleanup the way we have it scheduled for this year, and then maybe put this topic up for a work session.
I think it'd be good to have Nysley come and talk with us. We do, if we've scheduled a work session, I'd like to have dialogue with them.
I'd like to know if there are walk-ins as well.
It also gives time for city staff to kind of figure out, you know, just think about it a little bit more, come up with some policies and those kinds of things, or what they'd like to see.
Did I get you what you need tonight, Ethan?
Yeah. Joe, consensus get back with Nysley, have them come out and speak a little bit more about the program with us, but consensus to keep 2023 kind of under the plan.
Yeah, I think that'd be the way to do it, since we're so close, instead of changing here in the seventh inning, go ahead and continue on like we have, and then we can change it for next year. All right, we'll move on down the agenda, and the next item, I guess, better late than never, the Main Stutzman 14th Street and 9th Street and Walnut Street Proposal Project Advertisement. We're finally going out to bid on that stuff.
And just did a motion tonight for you guys to approve staff and certified engineering design to advertise and get those bids as far as the estimated timeline. Speaking with Harland, he felt we would not probably, with what they're saying as far as turnaround on projects and bidding, give enough time. If we tried to get bids back by the April 10th council meeting, but he did think we should have no problem being able to present bids at the April 24th meeting, so hopefully in less than a month, we will be looking at bids and tentative start dates for all that work.
That's exciting.
Yeah, good deal. Well, I don't know that there'll be any questions, but if there are, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to authorize city staff and certified engineering design to advertise and request bids for the Main Stutzman 14th Street and 9th Street and Walnut Streets projects.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Go ahead and go out for bids on the project we discussed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Good deal. By the way, Pat, you guys get all the brush moved? I drove by there the other day, and it looked like everything was gone.
Not quite. The Main Street section is pretty much open, but there's still some piles off of these.
Okay. Good, it's looking better. Next item on the agenda, we're gonna approve a check to Halsted Floral, and we always call these out since Derek is a council member, so...
Mr. Mayor, make motion to approve check number 120066 to Halsted Floral at the Plaza for $10,000, and approve ordinance number 2023-AP6A.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve check 12,000, well, it's 120,066 to Halsted Floral de Plaza. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That passes. Next item on our agenda, we do have one executive session scheduled this evening, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 75-4319B2, and ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and the city attorney. The open meeting and governing body two are convened in the city council chambers at 7:50 PM.
Second. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We will move the smaller conference room council. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Seeing no movement from the council, we will move on our agenda, and our next section is the report section. And governing body comments first tonight, I'll start with you Denise.
I've got nothing for tonight.
George.
Oh, just happy to be here in Halsted.
Amen.
Josh. Derek.
I'd like to say happy birthday to my wife, and also I want everyone to have a good Easter, and then we'll see them back on Easter Monday.
Nice plug. Well, I was in Texas fishing last week, and it could have went better, but it didn't go bad, so that's all I've got to say. We'll move on to Ethan for the city manager report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We just continue to work on soliciting bids for action there on the Townsmen Motel property. Pat, city superintendent and assistant superintendent, Pat Adams and Sean Yance will be at the Kansas Rural Water Show this week representing the city. Still following some legislation, particularly House Bill 2447, which is a pretty broad preemption bill that would really kind of turn home rule authority on its head. House Bill 2083, which deals with vacant property registrations. The city has one, so we're watching to see what comes out of that and working with our legislators, hopefully to not have any impairment to our currently existing ordinance. The city has one, so we're watching to see what comes out of that and working with our legislators hopefully to not have any impairment to our currently existing ordinance. Senate Bill 248, which is probably the biggest one, which is the local food sales tax removal that actually removes that local sales tax as well that would have a significant impact to our budget. And then Senate Bill 252, which deals with entities in consideration of government competition and property tax exemptions, which again would affect a pretty big revenue line pertaining on how many businesses thought they were in competition with us. Also, just wanted to note there was a water leak at the Riverside Concession bathrooms. Public Works is taking care of that and the pad went in under the bleachers and has hit its curing time. So construction should start on those bleachers either this week or next. And then as you noticed by the approval tonight, those dragon grant awards have gone out to the businesses. And I will just note for the business community that we still have dragon grant funds left. So encourage anyone to apply that might have a project that would qualify. And that is all I have this evening if there, unless there's questions.
When are we pouring the concrete on Main Street?
That we have a message out to Wally and I will email that out of when he expects that to happen. I haven't got a start date from him yet.
And also we talked once a little bit while back about the curb cuts, handicap accessibility.
We hadn't planned to do any more as far as on that east side of Maine and then west side. I mean, I guess logistically we'd need direction from you all of whether you want to see us engage in that or not.
Oh yeah.
And where you want us to put it so we can kind of work with the downtown businesses because they're going to lose a spot.
Right, right. No, I'd like to see us moving forward with putting the ones on the west side of, well, just wherever we can. But I'd like to see us move forward and putting them in. As I mentioned, that one time you and I were in the barber shop earlier that day before you were there. That old fellow, he had to walk all the way down to the corner and his truck was parked right in front of the barber shop. Then he had to walk with his walker back up to where his truck was because he couldn't get down the curb. So, yeah.
And then also while we're pouring, maybe keep in mind, you know, new signage that we talk about in work sessions possibly for parking. I don't know if, you know, you want to pursue that or not, but that'd be the time.
Well, there's a curb cut up there in front of Main Street, interiors and rizes, like a driveway cut. Maybe if we looked at one somewhere relatively close to Champs and the grocery store and then maybe two on the next block.
Split that next block up into equal thirds somehow.
Because the ones that were done on the west side, they look really good. I noticed them the other day when I was down there. Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. Same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you, council.